Would you like to go first?
Recording in progress.
When we actually have a couple of other members, we can go through the more formal agenda.
Sure.
Let you go first.
Absolutely, yeah.
And if you would maybe go to the podium, I think, so that we can record it and people can hear.
Yeah. I need to follow over here on behalf of Zoe's Double Hex Restaurant. Here with my wife, Vivian Thomas, who's our partner, and actually Sandy Patanak, who's Vivian's daughter, who's also a partner, is on Zoom with us. Anyhow, with the planning commission working on device and utensil, we just had a little bit of input for our side of town.
Keep going, Bob.
So, you know, up at the Double Hex Restaurant, we've been in business for over 25 years. Proud to have been a major player in town. As a longstanding, successful restaurant in that part of town, we've seen many changes over time. Because of these changes, we think the planning commission should consider a change in zoning for that part of town. Specifically Route 1130 east of Route 7. Over the years, that area has experienced much success, you know, Old Restaurant Row area.
And Motels.
And Motels. But last, you know, several years or so, that area town has seen a decline. And, you know, though the Double Hex still remains to have a strong presence, and we are in good financial footing, thankfully, there's been a marked decline of viable restaurant businesses over there. And, you know, with establishments coming and going, with underused extended vacancies and struggling businesses. Possible reasons, you know, could be Strat is very selfish, and now the folks that go off to Strat basically stay there and spend their money there. Certainly the motels in the area.
The Strat office, a lot of them.
They house, they don't house tourists anymore. They are filled with Strat employees. There was some state-funded housing as well.
There is restaurants because you have people.
You know, those, those were, you know, sources of business for us, for sure. And, like I said, over, you know, 26 years ago, probably about 26 years, the Double Hex started to move. It looked a lot different way, and it's just changed over time. You know, part of it is also, there's been extensive investment dollars that have been focused on downtown, which is great, but it's taken a bit of focus away from that part of town. It's a great thing for downtown, even though, you know, with the extra investment dollars down there, it may make things a little more congested. But that's Manchester. But also the lack of business investment east of Route 7, which, an argument can be made that there's no investment because of the restrictive zoning laws that were put in place years ago. You know, keeping in mind that Roots 1130 is one of the main east-west corners of southern town. There are many folks that travel there who turn right off of Roots 7, that go up the mountain. They pass through there, heading up the mountain, and basically bypass that there because there's nothing there enticing them to stop. There's nowhere to buy gas except out of town. You know, you can't buy a few supplies on that end of town, you don't have that, you know, a grabbing of dinner on your way to your Strat town. I mean, it's all significant sales that the town of Manchester loses, basically. And there's a tremendous amount of traffic that turns right off of, we call it the high Route 7. You know, Manchester's done a great job directing traffic to that town, especially in the post-retail era and peppered in. But it seems that the town is forgotten about the other side of the tracks, where Restaurant Row is kind of more like Restaurant Skid Row and that. Please consider some sort of zoning change for Roots 1130 east of Route 7. That section of town is just as vital as downtown. And yet, for some reason, that section of town just seems to be forgotten. You know, the success of one part of town shouldn't be at the expense of another part of town. And without allowing more usings in that section of town, there's not going to be a lot of investment or interest in the new customer.
What would you suggest?
Gas stations. You know, an establishment similar to HM Williams would be a great business up there. And, I mean, you know, who knows about the Double Hex property, it'll be over by last. But I'm just speaking in general in that section of town, where there's, there's a lot of, not a lot of gun going around there right now. And it's just kind of trending that way.
I would say, I mean, I mean, looking at the area, you've got five restaurants that are making business in there currently, with Roundhouse, Lobz, Denny's.
Corals.
Corals, the ladies and you guys.
Yep.
Do you have one hotel now that's still?
Yeah.
One, another one. And there's a kitchen at dinosaur, Frankies, and a great place to build dipper. There's not a lot else to do there.
There's not.
It wouldn't be a lot of locations, it would get into farmland as well, it does. But there's not a lot of locations to put a gas station. Like, I went from a regulation to you, you own Double Hex.
Yes.
You guys put in the electric charging spots. If you put in some more doors, and in the back of the property, you build a little wing area, everyone can sit, put in their phones and trucks and cars, that might be a maybe gas station in the future. There's not a lot of other locations to do that, and having still a regular.
Yeah, I mean, you know, certainly we did, we tried the electric car front and thinking that, you know, as long as the Double Hex, we all kind of believe that the infrastructure that we're building needs help.
Right.
And it didn't do anything for us. I mean, at the time we put it in, it was actually costing us money. And we put, spent a lot of money to get it put in. But then it was an extra charge as well for us. So, I mean, it's, it's, it's not something that is a viable business in and of itself, not the gas stations.
Well, I see the ones over here by Walgreens, they're full of gas.
Okay.
They're pretty full.
So you have one bar, that's not a, or the four.
One in the post-war as well are full. There's no other terminals in town, so there's one in Canada.
Right.
So, and you guys, so there's, you know, I'm not sure whether, why they are as full as in as a channel, but.
I think, you know, I think Bob's trying to ask us to reflect on a change.
Right, and I'm trying to understand how we've changed that to bring in a gas station.
Right.
So that's the thing.
But I think gas stations are like one of many, not one of many more business types.
I guess there is, I mean, the, there's a couple buildings I know that could be used for that. But the, there's like one entrance, and gas stations need to have two entrances. And that's, that's what the issue is, the result rebuilding that on the curb to be safe is an issue for, for a gas station.
Well, certainly the engineering part of it is not my expertise. And, but I'm just saying, as a business owner who's been there for a while, and that, I recognize that our town needs something. There's no investment going on.
What is the purpose, what is the zone that's purpose?
I guess that's my question, like, and maybe it's a question for Peter. It's like, what are the specific zones that you think are getting developed in that area?
I was gonna say, I think the gas station, you should do that.
I think it's like an excuse too, but give me a second.
Yeah, we'll check.
Any reasonable person would think it's a good idea.
I don't know if we're gonna solve this tonight, so.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I appreciate your request for us to consider a change in zoning course. I would like us to consider that, not debate with you whether or not we should have a gas station. I don't think that's the, that's the intention of you being here today. I think it's really just a request for us as we, as we think about this change in the town plan. What are the options?
What's the zone design now?
I believe it's mixed use two or three, but give us a minute.
Yeah, we're in order to go.
It's everything's free.
Everything's free, yeah.
Yeah, I believe, I remember when I think that was done, I believe.
What is that restrict?
To slow.
You're not gonna have gas stations. There's only certain amount of zones that will accept gas stations.
But it is because of the, because of the Strat mine and the motels, that's caused the area to.
It's, it's.
The lighting a little bit.
It's stacked.
Yes, because there's thousands of people in those restaurants. We're talking about separate brands, so you have to have these people stop.
Well, it means, yes, I mean, because of the.
So it is possible for us to redevelop, create this now and.
That's all we're asking.
No, no, it's totally cool. So I'm able to do three.
Great, Bob, thank you very much. Any other questions? It's a timely conversation because we're just about to go through this process, so.
Yeah.
Thank you for that, appreciate it. So let's just go back to the beginning of the meeting. And now we have a quorum, and maybe if everyone had a chance to see the meetings from the October 20th. If anyone has any questions or comments on that. If not, we have a motion to adopt the meeting minutes from the 20th.
I know that we accept the meeting minutes from October 20th, 25th.
I second it.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So just, just quickly, you know, Ray Nevin was in, I think, on the 20th, and I think we had a sort of an action item for him to follow up with, sending three photographs to either Peter. I think Leon, you were gonna chat with him.
I did.
I just wanted to try to get an update so we can kind of keep moving it along.
I worked on, I worked on some stuff. It's actually a lot harder to quantify the light design into a small group, is harder than you think.
Well, I'm sure it is.
Because I have to find at least, you know, several vendors for each style of light. You can't just have, oh, here's a style of light, it's only for one vendor, you can't do that. So it's been tough to, to get those groups. I've actually written out a list of, of specs, specs and stuff, but yeah. And I think we discussed, he and I discussed 24 as a maximum height for the lights, so they're not, they're gonna be high.
Right. Have you contacted any supply houses?
I have not contacted them, I'm just getting online.
They have those guys that just, they'll send it right out to look at a site, and look at it, and propose a couple of things. The tricky bit is, the variance, as you have discovered, is huge.
It's huge.
And there's not a lot of variables.
And so I'm trying to find a sort of a median.
Not to prolong this.
Yeah, right, right.
But if you just pick one style or two styles of lights, say this is our standard, and they can make that fit, we can make it just.
Similar in style to.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you think it'd be, okay to sort of share maybe at our next meeting, or do you think it's gonna be the new year?
Probably 70% done, just to try and start that.
Great, thank you for that, appreciate it. Item number two, so Wilbur, as you may or may not know, has written to Scott and has resigned his post on the planning commission. He feels that, you know, due to his recent illness, that he's not quite back up to speed yet. So I think he's gonna take a break from service, which leaves us, well, I guess, with two problems. One, we don't have Wilbur anymore, and we probably need to fill up that vacant position. And he was chairman of the planning commission as well, so we probably need to have some sort of process to redo that. Before, well, before we, before we jump to those two items, I just wanted to sort of say publicly that I'm extremely grateful for, even though he recruited me under this commission, I'm extremely grateful for his leadership in council and his contribution to the town during his service here. So he's gonna be sorely missed, so.
Yeah.
So, vacant position, chairman.
Well, my question is, let me hold, let you finish.
As vice chairman, I wasn't assuming, I didn't want to assume automatically that I just, you know, I get, I get a bump up because there's no salary increase, right? I get double, double my salary, right?
I did have a chance to talk to Scott. If somebody else wants to. Scott Murphy advised that we, it's being advertised for an open position right now.
Okay.
So when they fill the position, we can elect, carry on the way we're going, and wait till July 1, when we have a new cast.
Yeah, I was gonna recommend the same thing.
Say it again, so we wait?
Wait till we get a new member, and then we take a new vote.
Okay, that sounds great.
But, so taking a vote on what?
On wanted positions.
Positions.
Chair, we have to have a vice chair, because now the vice chair is chair, but we need a vice chair as well, so we have to do a new election. But we want to have five people here to do that.
We can carry on, and definitely till July, where we elect new officers, and just carry on as vice chair, and filling that role.
Why wouldn't we just make David chair of the, if we do that? I mean, if he wants to, but he doesn't wanna.
Because once someone comes in, we're required to have a new vote when a new member joins. So we can just wait until the new member joins, and then have a new vote.
Why can't we have a new vote now? Does it have to be on the new?
Because you have to vote again, maybe you have to vote again in July.
So. Or it could come sooner, because they could join anytime, they could join next week.
So the process is, when we get a new member, we have to have a new vote?
We, we vote at that time, or elect to vote in July.
Is that a requirement, that when a new member comes to have a vote?
No.
Okay, so then, I just, I'm not following why we can't have David be chair if he wants to be chair.
No, no, he is chair right now because he was vice chair, and Wilbur's not here anymore, so he is automatically.
By default.
He's by default chair already.
Yes.
Can't we just keep?
You don't redo it, I mean, by default.
Can't we just keep him as chair if we want him as chair?
Yeah, if you guys wanna do that now, I don't see why you can't do it.
I'm just wondering what the options are.
We could have a vote, and then we can elect a new vice chair, and, you know, all of that right now if you want.
Well, we have someone here that's presenting for it, so just not prolong, because I want to keep things moving, but that's not my role, but.
I'm happy, I'm happy to be chairman, and I'm happy to wait until we have a fifth member to figure out what the other roles are.
And I want to recommend, if anybody knows anybody who would be good on the commission, Wilbur found you, I found her. You know, I mean, Thomas, if you know anybody who would be good, you know, just, yeah.
Put the word out.
Put the word out. Someone who wants to do a town plan.
Yeah. Okay, so, to be decisive, someone recommend, make a motion, or we. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
I think David's been doing a little bit of a job, and I think he'd be great as the chair, that, you know, so. But I defer to everybody else, I'm just one vote here, whether we want to wait and have some more process, wait till we get someone else. I'm sort of like a woman of action, so I'm like, well, we've got David, let's keep him, let's make him chair, but that's just me, so.
Well, I mean, if you want to be vice chair, I can nominate him.
Not that much action.
That's a woman of action right there.
Thomas?
I'm sorry.
Would you be vice chair? Or do you want to wait till we have a new member?
I, well, I don't think that we should wait till we have a new member.
Okay.
That's not, that, I don't think that's a good precedent to set, because then we'd be voting on a slate every single time.
Leon, do you want to be vice chair?
No, I have too many things to do. I was vice chair before, and I was always stressing that Wilbur wouldn't show up.
We're the longest running.
I am, I am, but to me, I'd wanna take on that much responsibility or something.
Okay.
So would you like to make a proposal?
Proposal that we, I propose we wait till a new member to vote?
Or select, would you like to be vice chair?
Sure, let's just move forward.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, unless, I would default to you.
I don't know, I have to think about it. I remember back when I was thinking about it.
You open a can of worms.
I just, I think David should be chair, because he's great.
But we also need a vice chair.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're gonna go.
He doesn't want to do it.
That, if you don't want to, I will.
I feel like you've been here longer, so I defer to you.
I think David, as long as you plan on physically being here, percent of the time, then I'd be happy with that.
I plan on being here, ninety percent of the time.
All right, he's our fearless leader. Do we need to vote?
I think we need a proposal. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye, I love how you.
Motion?
Action. I, I propose that David is chair and Thomas is vice chair.
I second it.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Michael, we appreciate your patience, thank you very much. And we're already probably a little bit behind time, so may I hand it over to you?
Yes.
For those of you on the planning committee, Michael's firm, Regrowth Planning, won the bid to help us with the town plan. And we've had a couple of meetings, one face-to-face, one maybe online, just trying to get prepped for, you know, this, this project, so. Michael, over to you.
Do you want me to approach the bachelor podium?
I think the podium, just from a voice recording and people on the phone.
The people on Zoom.
And we have this team on the, on the Zoom. And we have his team on the Zoom call as well.
Yes, if you guys don't mind, I know some of you, I don't know all of you, we can just maybe go quickly through the table and introductions, so.
Do you have more?
That's fair, okay. Lea?
Caroline?
Caroline, nice meeting you, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
David?
David?
Thomas West.
Thomas West, yes.
Peter Revlon?
Peter.
Zoni?
Elias Schroeder, assistant.
Elias, okay, enjoying us on Zoom. We have two of my partner, partners, we have Emily Gardner and Jackson Montano, who are joining us via Zoom, they're both with Saratoga Associates. I've worked, partnered with Saratoga Associates on many projects over the past 15 or so years. I don't know how long they've been, they've been doing this stuff. But I asked them to join us because I felt that I wanted to have their expertise, particularly with some of the public outreach, some of the public meetings. So, my name is Michael Allen with Regrowth Planning, I live semi-locally over in Pollock. And thank you very much for selecting us to join us, and looking forward to starting on this. Briefly, today, I just want to kind of go through the schedule, which you should have updated schedule. It's deviated a little bit since my proposal, I moved things up a bit to try and take advantage of a potential earlier start, so give it a little bit more breathing room in the schedule. I know that the town is interested in looking to adopt a new plan by the end of next year, and it's a somewhat aggressive schedule, but I think we can, we can certainly do it, especially if we can get it in the ground running right now. So, just briefly, going through the schedule, if we move things up to, you know, today, sort of mid to late November, we're sort of starting out with task one, data collection and assessment, and this is where we're starting to sort of collect some of the local data, review the town plan, review zoning, and some of the other related documents that the town has put together over the years. What I'm hoping to do between this meeting and the next one, try and set some dates for our public meetings coming up. Because very soon, I would like to start rolling out a public notification, the outreach to get all of that running. We already have a website essentially set up, but once we have the dates for the public meetings, I can begin advertising, put out posters, flyers, directing people to, let them know what we're doing, direct them to the website, so they see what we're, what we're trying to accomplish, and see the big picture of how this is all going to roll out, hopefully with something like this. So, the idea is during this first stage, I'll be conducting a lot of the interviews with some of the different department heads, as was recommended in the RFP, and begin advertising for task two, where we would have sort of an introductory meeting with the public to just kick off the project, introduce what we're doing to everybody, familiarize them with the different online features that we have between the website, we can have online surveys, we can have an online comment form, introduce all of that to the public, and then begin to get some initial public input on what do people feel is the overall long-term vision for the project for Manchester, what would they like to see Manchester move toward as far in correction over the next eight years or so. That intro meeting will use to introduce people to the visioning survey, which will begin to, I guess, ask some initial questions about some certain topics to get people's brains going, but also give them an opportunity to just tell us whatever else is on their mind.
We had some of these earlier this year.
Yes.
That we did the same exact thing in your interview. Can we not just use those meetings and information for those meetings?
Well, I'd like to get a copy of whatever and what you guys got, because that would be helpful.
Speaking of that, I'm sorry.
Certainly helpful, but I don't mind, you know, I'm probably going to hear some of the same stuff, and that's going to happen. Yeah, that's fine.
Was that Peter?
I beg pardon, I just need to start fresh, clean slate.
Start fresh?
We're going to, we're going to hear it everywhere.
I mean, because we had a really good turnout last time.
I beg pardon.
We had a really good turnout, and it was just earlier this year, so I feel like if we did another one so soon, people would be like, we just did this, and we gave you information, and you're not using it.
That's, that's, that's also for a town plan that was previously adopted, this is going to be for a new town plan.
Okay, but we didn't really, yeah, we didn't do anything. Right, the changes that they made, they suggested we did, so that's the problem.
So, I predict that a year from now, and you guys are all going to be sick of me, but if you trust us, Emily and Jackson and myself, we will lead you on a process that I predict a year from now, we will have a town plan, which is, I think, much more focused on some very strong priorities that the town needs to address, and a new vision that's based on a lot of community input. The last town plan that was, was adopted, granted, you guys did do some community outreach, I don't think it really reflects a lot of that, and I think this is an opportunity to take a second bite of the apple, hear from folks, and really have an opportunity to integrate some of that input into the, into the plan, what we think it works best. So, I don't mind.
I, I think we ought to do it, because I just don't think there's any reason why you shouldn't have more outreach. You know, if we do it once every eight years, and we do it in January, so it's another eight years, it just doesn't, it's not long enough.
Right.
You know, we need multiple interactions, and I think the one we did at the library was, was a little generic. It was a little bit like, tell us how you're feeling, whereas I think, you know, Michael and his team, you know, have got some very specific questions and asks, you know, as to how to get people to contribute.
And I really want to get the notion out of the folks, if we're looking for bigger picture, long-term ideas, are we going in the right direction? And make sure we're soliciting that type of input. There's been a lot of changes just since you guys had that last meeting, that I think might trigger people to have concerns about this. The Valvoline proposal for one activated a lot of people into thinking, well, is this something, how is something like this going to affect the town so?
Do you want to, do you want to do that meeting in December?
I don't think there'd be enough time. I'd like to do at least a month or so of advertising, I don't know if we would have enough time, and doing it so close to the holidays tends to.
Do you have a date in mind? Because we'd like to get that on the calendar.
Well, right now, and I'm jumping ahead on the agenda, right now, I have in our preliminary schedule here for around mid-January for that intro public meeting. I've already spoken to the library about if they would be available, what days they are for. They are only open late Tuesdays and Thursdays, so we probably only want those days. And obviously, the library has a green facility, it's a little bit larger than this room, so we can get some more people. If you guys feel that the library would be a better venue for that introductory public meeting, I'd like it because we're not meeting in town, also, it feels like a special.
That's what we had it last year.
Yeah, and I like the idea. Do you have any preferences if we were limited to a Tuesday or Thursday? I apologize, it's not one of your regular meeting nights, but if we could do it on a Tuesday or Thursday, the library is only, let them know ASAP because they get booked up pretty soon.
I thought you Tuesday, better, better, you better turn off, people get busy Tuesday or Thursday.
I agree. Also, Peter suggested maybe could, if you wanted, I'm not against it, weekend, like Saturday.
That wasn't a complete vote of confidence, was it?
Well, Saturday might allow more people to attend who wish to attend.
In the day?
During the day, during the day, because I think they close at four, which is, they're usually pretty busy.
I'm just rolling it out there, if you guys don't want to do that, it's fine.
Yeah, I'd rather do Tuesday night.
I'm not saying either or, I'm just saying in addition to, we should have a Saturday.
Tuesday's fine, I think. The 6th is probably too early. I can't do it.
They can't be closed, they haven't concluded.
They're closed at seven, so.
No, the 6th of January.
Oh, no, the 6th of January.
It's probably too early from the holidays.
So, mid-January, like.
So, the 13th, I actually couldn't do the 13th, but I could do the 20th.
My birthday.
Is it your birthday?
Yeah.
So, we'll celebrate Leon's birthday, maybe the 20th at the library. How about that? With the 20th, what, for you?
20th, we're saving, we didn't already vote, it's the 15th.
Great.
The 21st?
The 20th.
The 20th is a Monday. 21st is a Thursday.
No, 20th is a Tuesday.
In 2026. Oh, what year? 2026?
Tuesday.
What? Emily, is that okay for you and Jackson?
Yes, that was.
So, you can confirm with the library, that's our best shot.
So, the January 20th?
January 20th, Tuesday the 20th.
Okay.
What time?
You guys normally do these at like 5:30, correct?
It doesn't have to be the same as this meeting, we can, I want us to be as flexible as possible.
They have a kind of a hardest, hardest stop at seven, they close.
Right.
But they let it typically to eight last time, across your meeting force, they're happy to six.
I don't want to use that chip until I have to, but that is an option, okay. So, I will confirm, and maybe Peter, you and I can coordinate on discussing that date again.
We'll lock that down tomorrow, if that's what you'd like.
Yeah, the community work, I think that would be very good. And that will give us an opportunity, and I don't know that Emily or Jackson are necessary for that to take a meeting, because I really am looking for when we have more of the workshop visioning meetings to have them there for that, for the introductory meeting, I can handle that myself. It's largely explaining who I am, what this process is about, and how it's going to work, and then soliciting some initial input.
Do you need us to be present?
I would like you to be present, because I think it shows support and interaction with it. If you can't make it, that's understandable, but I will be putting together.
Do you not make it?
I will be putting together full notes, both verbatim and summarized for everybody, so if you can't make it, I understand, but it's sometimes it's nice for you guys to hear from people firsthand, so.
But to be clear, you'll run the meeting.
I'm running.
You know, people like me kind of go, oh, by the way, Michael, do you think?
Do we have a start time for this?
I want to say, I want to say 5:30.
5:30?
Yeah.
I want to give you this, this is the amount we came up with for the section of the town plan.
That's all right.
Excellent, thank you.
Michael, you'll have all the Zoom connections.
We need to have it by August, you know.
Okay, thank you.
You'll have all the Zoom connections and all that?
What's that?
The Zoom connection is called the A.
I'm going to handle all that, we have all our own equipment, cameras, AD system, though I might use some of their projector because they have a bigger screen.
Is there anything you'll need from staff?
I'm sorry, what?
Anything that you'll need from staff?
Not yet, I'll let you know if there is, but. So, on to the next steps will be school and workforce outreach, where we're trying to meet some of the, some folks that aren't normally involved in some of these public discussions, with younger families, kids, and also some of the local workforce, try and get their perspective on the needs and future vision for Manchester. And then, then we have the visioning workshop, which is much more community with the meeting that you held previously, whoever has the people come in and describe the vision. At that point, we'll have the input from the surveys to present to people and say, this is what we've heard so far from folks, here are our initial, here's the initial input we've been hearing, present that, and then solicit some more ideas, and that's where Jackson and Emily are going to be instrumental in helping to guide some of those discussions. Perhaps we'll have, based on the results of the surveys, we'll have some initial ideas for maybe some breakout discussion groups and so forth. After that, we'd like to have a workshop on housing, to particularly try and address some of the housing issues that have the town, Manchester, by the way, congratulations on being the 802 Housing Initiative, that's something that I think is a great idea and has a lot of potential, and maybe there is an opportunity for our work to coordinate with you and the housing task force on some of that rollout, because part of that is a lot of public outreach for different type of housing technologies and housing models and locations that I think would be useful, and so I'd like to coordinate that with you guys. And then, the third workshop is one that's really dovetailed toward economic development, how would we want to diversify Manchester economy, what are some opportunities for growing local businesses and diversification and working on those. We would then take all of that input that we've heard, and in task seven, then present our initial draft recommendations to the public, get some feedback on the draft recommendations, and we sit down and go over how to put this all together in the plan, present the plan in, let's say, August, and have some time to then adjust things before we start into a more formal process of the planning commissions, public hearing, and then the select board public hearings. At that point, however, things should be ideally pretty much set, and we shouldn't have any major changes in the plan at that point, so.
Question for you, how many, how many of these, because it's, you know, there's like a little block there, how much of this is happening at meetings with us, and how much of it's happening on your side?
Most of it is happening internally with us, and then what I will be doing is occasionally posing you guys with some draft materials that I'd ask you to, or give you the opportunity to look at, review, if you have any comments on, we'll certainly discuss the comments. I plan to be at however many of your regular meetings you, you're willing to have me at to go over anything, if you have any comments, I'll take them, otherwise, we're going to keep plowing ahead.
I mean, now, with the town plan, I think one of the things we're looking for, definitely what we didn't have, is we're looking to not just have a vision for where it just really should go, but also how we get there, that's the important thing, because what was in the old town plan, it's just like, we want this, and we wish this.
Right.
But there's nothing that tells you how to, how to, you know, steps and develop, so that's what we really want to see put into this plan.
Well, one of the things I had in, in my own personal agenda, I don't know if you guys have given a copy, but, I mean, goals for the new plan that I see are trying to encapsulate some of the big ideas, of making very clear what our goals are, maybe prioritize three or four primary goals that we really need to take care of in order to realize this vision, with more focus on how those, how those are identified, kind of streamline the plan, more user-friendly layout, and I think identifying those specific steps. I don't know if there's, if you guys have additional goals for the plan that you'd like to.
You know, I think the RFP sent out the goals pretty well. I think that the thing from my perspective that might be, might be missing is sort of some sort of link to a capital plan or a budgeting plan, or, you know, these things have to get paid for, and if we don't figure out a way to tie that to a budgetary process, they'll never happen. So, I know that's not part of.
They have to go through the.
Right, Michael, it's not part of your job, I don't think it's part of this RFP, but I think it's something that we need to do with the select board or with other task forces that help us figure out how to get some of this stuff funded. Because if it's going to cost $20 million to do something in the plant, in the strategic plan, it's never going to happen. So, we've got to be practical, I think, in figuring out how, how some of this stuff gets funded.
One of the things that we've done, both, you know, myself and with Emily and Saratoga Associates, has been very good about specifically identifying which element or which agency within the town is responsible for moving this ball down the field and timeline for when it should get done. And I'd like to do that, because otherwise, things tend to fall off the plate and get overlooked, and this makes it a little bit easier to hold people's feet to, this is something we're committed to, and whether it's the select board, planning commission, the housing task force, or, or Peter, people get named specifically, and it's their job to carry that ball down the field, so.
One of the other things I wanted to ask about is the building in some flexibility, the state is handing down this edicts from time to time, just how do we anticipate that type of thing coming, if at all possible?
Well, I mean, you can predict to a certain degree of how we're going to have to handle some of the Act 250 stuff. For example, one of the things I want, the last thing I want to make sure I cover with you guys is mapping. I know that we're going to have to update, for example, the land, the future land use plan, and that's going to have to dovetail with the new Act 250, land use categories, and what areas of town you guys are looking for, tier 1B exemptions, and part of that's going to have to dovetail with our housing analysis, and ideally finding some potential locations in town that we want to say, hey, as a community, do we agree that these locations might be acceptable to housing? One of the things that this community, as well as many other that we've worked with, is everybody agrees, you know, maybe more workforce housing, housing, so forth in the town. And everybody agrees on that until it gets to a point where we start talking about a specific site, and then everything breaks down. I'd like to have a more frank discussion with the public about that and be real estate about it. And something I think, it's going to be a real estate discussion, but one that I think needs to get done. So the housing, some of the housing expectations from the state and also Act 250, I'm quite certain we can all work out how that's going to be accommodated in the plan. Meeting some of the housing goals is going to be challenging, but I think this discussion will be out of that.
Great.
On that note, mapping, when we proposed initially for this work, I was of, like, assume that we would need to update all of the maps. I've since learned that maybe a lot of the maps were already updated by B C R C. And I wasn't, I believe the only map that we would definitely need to update would be the future land use map, which is arguably probably the most important. It's a forward-looking map, whereas all the others are really existing edition maps. Are there any other maps that you guys feel we would need to update? Obviously, like subsurface geology hasn't changed much, but are there any that you feel?
I don't know. I don't, I'm not aware of any, but.
No. Because I think we have budgeted to do a lot of, okay.
All right. This was not to your question, but Nick Ziyak and the B C R C called me the other day and said, "Any data or shape files that you would need, he's willing to send you, but he'd like to do it wholesale."
Okay. Yeah, one of my first steps, thank you. One of my first steps is I need to go down and meet with them because I want to coordinate what changes they've most recently made in the plans. And we know that those are areas of the plan that you're not going to mess with too much. I don't want to undo any of their hard work. And whatever's left over or stuff that we can, we can update accordingly. So that's one of my next steps is meeting with them and coordinating that info. So thank you.
Yep.
I've updated the webpage. I don't know if any of you have been there recently, but as soon as we set some of these dates, we're going to-
What's the website? What's the-
Well, technically you can get there through the tiny URL that was in my proposal. It's tinyurl.com forward slash townplan2026.
We'll put that link up on the website, too.
Okay. Yeah, certainly. I can make sure I send that to you guys.
Yeah, that'd be great.
It's part of, it's part of the rollout of any press release and posters advertised, and I do, going to have that in there. It's really going to be essential clearinghouse for all the information. So the public can always go there to get the latest info. So I've got the mapping. So I think we originally budgeted Saratoga Associates to do some, a bit more than mapping that maybe we need. So at this point, free them up to do other parts of the plan. Jackson and Emily, maybe you guys can give some thought to what other tasks you might want to help out with instead. So.
Yeah, that's great.
So I don't know if you guys, if it's too early or we can pick some potential dates for some of the other workshops or maybe-
Could you propose a set of dates for the other workshops?
Sure.
And then, you know, maybe at our next meeting, we could, you know, just take a look at those and just confirm them?
Yeah.
I mean, I think they're sufficiently far out in terms of, you know, March, April, May.
They are. I just like have them bound up before we do any public release.
Right. So if you could just give us a couple of dates?
Yeah, I guess we can do that.
I think Tuesdays sound good, especially if you're going to go to the library.
Tuesdays sound good and-
Not always for Tavistock because Jonathan sometimes has slight hormones on Tuesdays.
Right. I-
So is, do you ever prefer a date, a day?
Well, I was just going to ask that we try and not just alternate the days, but maybe the times, the locations. Because not everyone can get any, regardless of where it's at, not everyone can get to a certain place right at 5:30. And if we want to have a diverse and truly transparent process, we need to give different opportunities for people to participate. So yes, part of that, the question, to answer your question, as long as it doesn't conflict with a select board meeting.
And we can use this venue?
Yeah, I would, yeah, I would love to see us do as many of these. We've talked about doing, we're setting the intro meeting at the library, assuming that that date is still available for them. But I'd love to see us do, to do as much of this work outside of this room.
Yes.
That, that would be my preference. And, and as part of that, to take into consideration things like parents who may or may not be able to participate in person if they have children. So if we can look at something that would provide childcare as well.
Okay. Well, the schools, when I did my initial outreach to some of the schools, I know families have offered to, some of the, you know, most of them are to a meeting. Their gymnasium is certainly large enough. It's not great acoustically, but it's big and will provide probably some childcare-ish opportunities.
Yeah.
So maybe that's something we would look at for one of our, one of our meetings.
Okay.
So whether maybe I could reach out to them about that and also potentially enable street and burger as well. I can sort of reach out. So if you want a variety of venues and times.
I think the Hampton End was available last time. I can check with Captain.
What was that?
The Hampton End.
Hampton End.
I think we used their workroom, their conference room.
I'm not familiar with their space inside.
Yeah, I think they concede maybe 50, 35, 40, 50.
I, to your Saturday idea, did we decide that that wouldn't work for the, this team because of the childcare?
Childcare would be difficult.
That would be hard.
Okay.
It wouldn't necessarily be hard if we could incorporate some sort of childcare into it.
Right.
It's small. And we did that as part of Town Meeting Day.
Just to your point, I think it's nice, like, when you work during the week, it can be overwhelming to add other things in. So I feel like if we did do something on the weekend, we might get, you know, a different audience, but certainly we'd have to figure out the childcare thing because we don't want to make it hard.
Yeah, yeah. I, I would agree, though, that if we-
Like in the day, you know, because some people, like in the winter, don't go out at night. I don't like to go out at night. It's too cold and dark. So I don't know, just thinking about how we can access as many people or do as many people opportunities to join and participate.
I agree. I agree. Well, one of the things that I was proposing was that all our meetings would be also assigned to cats home, too. And wherever we have Emily and Jackson available, they can help coordinate the online audience versus the in-person audience, which is some type of challenge, but it's useful because people get no way to make it in person, especially if they have bad weather. So that's certainly something we could do. So let me get back to you guys with some proposed dates and a variety of locations and times.
Yeah, I do agree that we need to try to lock down these, these dates as quickly as possible. I am already scheduling things out for work into January and February. And I think even into March, that will take me out of the state.
Right.
So, and that's not necessarily the priority. It's really getting it out, getting the word out.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
And I'd like to ideally have these set. So if we do the public rollout, we don't have these spaced place over to be determined spots that people will forget about. So, okay.
Yeah, let's try to do that quickly. Well, just as soon as you send us them, we can just iterate over email and maybe get back to you, Michael.
Okay. Well, for my next, and for our next meeting, you guys are meeting in December. I don't know if there's a date set for that, but I'm hoping to prepare for you guys in advance. And I don't know if you actually repeat this stuff in advance or not in standard. Volunteers, who might always have time, but I'll be preparing some of the advertising branding for this so it has a consistent look and feel, and also preparing some of the initial survey questions for you guys. And be giving you the opportunity to look at those before that all goes live. And in the meantime, I'll be coordinating with Peter on setting up some of the meetings with the department heads and coordinating with B C R C on what elements of the plan we don't want to touch because they've recently updated that information. Other than that, the only other thing I wanted to confirm with you guys unless you have anything else for me is what was your next meeting?
We're about to decide that. You just give us a minute.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Michael and his team?
No, thank you.
This is great. Thank you.
Yes.
And thank you Emily and Jackson for being patient. Is there anything that you guys want to say? I didn't give you enough time to say anything.
Um, just listening, I think it's all said and done, you know, are any decisions being made? I just wanted to offer a lot of ideas when it comes to the how do we get there portion. Something that I did for another community, we called our implementation matrix. And it was a Google sheet so that it's accessible beyond my time with them for them to edit and track things in. So it, you know, was organized by topic, the goal, the action steps under it. And then it had tracking unit for, you know, the goal completion date, is there a cost associated, who's in charge? And it's something that's a living document you can always update, and that's spreadsheet format. And we have one that's all to your planning for, you know, a capital plan or personal work process. So just going to toss that out there as an idea for when we get to that stage.
Thank you, Emily.
Right. We had a pretty long input from the energy committee. We have, it's like 40 pages. They, they wanted the town plan now, you know, and I, you know, wanted part of town plan as well. But I mean, was it possible to be in a previous that is not actually-
Certainly. What we've done typically in the past where we have a huge data dump of information that is useful information, but would, it would clog out the, the short and sweet of the plan. And what we do is encapsulate takeaway from that as much as possible in the plan and refer to the full thing in the appendix. Or for example, we might have a full survey results of, in the survey that will summarize briefly in the body of the plan. So it's reflected there. If you want to dig into the details, it's in the, it's in the methods.
Right. And I think we are, I had talked to Wilbur, this is now a couple of months ago. And we had agreed and he actioned to reach out to Carl and ask Carl to write a two-page executive summary of the 40 pages.
Or they just looked through it.
Right. So I don't, I mean, both of those are going to be inputs, I think. The 40 pages and the two pages will be input into Michael's process, I think. So the idea would be to take the 40 pages to an appendix.
That's longer than what the town plan to be.
What, what is the 40? Yeah, no, absolutely, absolutely.
Does that have a page? Do you want to give us now?
Well, yeah, I mean, Wilbur and I talked about sort of a couple of pages per section.
Per each section.
And, you know, I think depending on how you count them, I think it's between 17 and 19 sections. So, you know, maybe you're going to preamble some conclusions. I think we've got to try to get this under, you know, maybe 60 pages.
Couple, I mean, 60, I was thinking more of like 30.
I don't think we can do 30, but well, I'd love to see us. I'd love to see-
This would be like 10 sections.
Well, there's more, there's more than that, but it was about 19. You don't need two pages for each, but about two pages is what I'm thinking. I know.
I know.
The size is possible.
The size is possible.
I, yes, yeah.
I want a date, a date for the next meeting. Well, are we finished?
I just do, I have a question.
Yes.
And this is kind of for everyone as well as, as well. We do have a pretty dedicated, as we're talking about Carl and the energy committee, we do have a pretty dedicated group of folks in town who feel very strongly about renewable energy and just energy, our use of energy in particular. Would that fit into the idea of discussing that and kind of workshopping that either with them or with, and, and/or with the community? Does that fit into a particular workshop session that's in here? Is that-
Uh, not, not all of it, but I mean, that would generally fall under just a general visioning, I would think. And I mean, if we want to have a breakout session of just sustainability and energy use, I can certainly accommodate that.
I mean, Carl had already compiled that already. So they already had the spent 40 pages.
Sure. I'm just thinking as part of continuing to bring more people in to have this discussion over the next year. Because things change and opinions, facts change.
Does this group have a formal name or is it just-
It's just the energy committee, I think, right?
They, they workshop their ideas with their proposal already. So it's sort of like, you know, they're workshopping it for like, you know.
Yeah, I just, I'm just curious. I was just curious if there was, it sounds like it fits into the visioning workshop session. But I just know that that's a group that's going to feel pretty passionate.
With various departments and I suggested also the housing committee.
Yeah.
I could provide myself to be available for them there to sit down with them at any point if they're ready to at least hash out, hear what they have to say, and maybe we can work out the details of, do we want to take this to a larger discussion?
Okay. I think they would appreciate that.
Yeah, I think they would. Thank you. Good question.
Thank you.
I'll let you guys get to the rest of it, whatever.
We've got one item left that you might want to listen to, and that is a date for our next meeting.
Now, we have other business, right? Is that correct?
We don't have, tonight I don't think we have other business.
Well, I mean, I mean, we have someone that I thought she was going to speak with, she was, you're right.
Yeah.
I thought she was getting up to speak, you know. So if we have meetings to discuss, I just didn't want to bring up this.
Can we just do the next meeting before we, just so he can, he can get on his way? We're thinking a meeting before the holidays. Can we do the 15th maybe or December 15th?
That's a Monday.
It is a Monday.
Yes.
The 8th and 15th are both Mondays.
I can do the 15th Monday at 5:30.
Yep.
I can do the one.
Leon Skud Thomas.
You do the 15th at 5:30? You're going to be late.
I would be late.
You're coming from-
I'm coming from Bennington. I'll be at Southwest Tech.
How did that work out last time?
Uh, as long as I'm quick.
No, but I don't want to be stressed or break the law or, you know.
What about the 16th? What about Tuesday, the day after?
That there's a, if this select board goes on their continued schedule, I believe that would be a follow on a select board meeting. I'm not 100% sure, but I think it would.
17?
Yeah.
Emily and Jackson, if you guys can hear me, I'll touch basically you guys.
We can do 17, Leon and I.
I can do 17.
So let you guys get back to what you need to do.
17.
17.
Okay, Wednesday.
Thanks for, thanks for joining us.
Thanks, Emily. Thanks, Alice. Jackson?
Welcome.
So Wednesday the 17th at 5:30?
12:17.
Oh, shit. Are you, can you do that?
17 is, you have D R V ethic.
Oh.
I, I can probably still do the 15th. It's, I don't know that this is a for sure scheduled date for Southwest Tax Board. It might just be a whole in case we need it. So let's, let's go with the 15th if-
Monday the 15th at 5:30.
Because then it maintains our regular frequency and I can, I can get here even if I'm late.
Right.
How often you guys stick to a regular schedule versus a special? I assume this is like, just you guys got the wrong filter.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think twice a month, you know, it's sort of the, the general consensus, right? And I think the holidays and summer, you know, it gets harder, but we should try to keep to a, the twice a, twice a month. And that gives us increased opportunity to interact with you in a public forum.
Right. I just wasn't sure how often you guys would stick to the Mondays versus-
Mostly Mondays. I would say mostly Mondays.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah. But that's different from your workshops. If your workshops have to be on a Saturday or a Thursday or a Friday, I don't, I don't mind. I'd rather do it when the public wants to do it. Any other business?
I would like to bring up that we have some things in the past, in the past few years, that have sort of fallen from ways I have worked on. And they just kind of got never voted on, never tried to start again. One, Lee Thomas's sandwich board proposal they came up with.
Sandwich board?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Tom's doing a pretty good sandwich board proposal. And we have some options of sandwich boards around town.
Okay.
And, and he revised it. And, and he revised it, and it was pretty good, we haven't wrote it on. And then we have something that we always work on, that I'm working on, that also will be on the docket. We have a, pretty soon the Housing Task Force is going to give us some paperwork for short-term rentals for us to go over. That's going to come back up again, it's been going off along to us for years.
Do they have a permission form?
Yeah, this is what's...
Of course.
They're going to push that to us. Arby's and campers, this is what we had worked on, that we never got back to. Remember this, Thomas?
Yes.
And we never got back to, we only, we had some rules for Arby's and campers, we have nothing.
Right.
So someone could just park one of their front yard, and they're forever at this point, you know?
So is there a list of these things that you can send us?
I can't, and then there's something called the seasonal light, lights warnings, this may be before you get back there.
Never heard of it.
Okay, so the seasonal lights warnings is something to beautify the town of Manchester, to encourage businesses within the center of town to put white Christmas lights on the gables of their roof flags in front of their businesses, all through town.
Right.
In order to make it feel more festive from fall through, all through winter, you know, fall and winter. And that was, a lot of towns that are tourist towns like ours do that, because it makes it seem more festive, more alive at night. And it's pretty dark except for the circle. And so...
Okay, so is the process to submit those and we debate them at the next meeting?
Maybe we'll debate them.
Well, I know nothing, I know nothing, Carolyn, I'm sure knows nothing. So maybe we have a bit of a, sort of a mini presentation, and then we figure out next steps, or we vote on the next steps, and then that's it.
Yeah, so I think, generally speaking, as chair, you get to set the agenda.
Set the document.
So that's really kind of up to you.
Like Speaker of the House.
Yeah, but I don't like doing that. I'm much more of a, I'm much more of a, what do you guys think?
I appreciate, I appreciate that, but you can, however you, it sounds like collaboratively, if we can work on, I mean, any time that I have asked to have something put on the agenda, it has been, it's not like I've said, can we please discuss this, and the chair has said no, but...
Are these, are these like half an hour each, or these like...
We could put these into one per meeting, and then we could, it's like...
Why don't you just send me an email, let me know which ones you want to do, which order you want to do them, and we'll do them one per meeting?
Yeah.
How about that?
And, yeah, we work on it, and we send it to the, to the Select Board.
Great.
That's it.
That's it.
Yeah, we can actually vote on it at the meeting, and write notes and change it.
Notes?
They can, they can take, they can take notes and change it, print it out for the Select Board, that's it.
My only request is I like to review things beforehand, so I can like, think about it.
Is that the one you...
I think I'm slow, and I like to kind of roll things, so to just have some prep time on it, so I can look at it.
So if there's four or five of these things, can you just send them all over?
There's probably more, I just, I just happened to have a cross...
Just send whatever you've got, and tell us what order you want to do them in, and we'll just bang them out?
Yeah, I'll send them...
That way Carolyn can read them. Was that okay?
Yeah. So, since you're chair, hopefully.
I did want to add that the Housing Task Force has not voted yet on the short-term rental recommendations, so they have not voted on that yet.
Yeah, that will come down the line soon.
Yes, so it's my understanding that they're going to discuss it this next month, or whatever the next meeting is, and then, and then we should, in theory, expect a recommendation from them.
And so that's the process, they'll send us something in writing to review?
Yeah, and because it's zoning, is, you know, it falls under the zoning for, you know, for use, and so we would review it and discuss it amongst ourselves, after they are discussing amongst themselves. We discuss it, and then we send it to the Select Board, and they discuss it amongst us.
It's like a hot potato.
It's pretty much it, yeah.
And then when it comes to us, we have the duty to...
Yeah, make changes, yeah.
And then we vote on the approved form?
And they're going to say this, they're a bigger group than we are, they're going to say, it's their recommendation here, you know, but we'll, you know, have our, we're, we have more power really to make changes than they do, and the Select Board really has the most power, because they can change our changes.
Okay, right, they're the...
Yeah, they're the final say.
Back to you, Oliver.
And Michael, the 802 housing that you referred to, is that the infill housing piece?
Yes.
That just, okay. Great, and so that's my part of the town planning that you...
Well, I mean, you're embarking on this initiative right now with 802 housing, which I think is very useful. It would seem weird to have the town plan and the housing initiative going to two separate tracks.
Yes.
We need to have a discussion about how we can bring those two together. I'm not sure what's the best way to do it just yet, but maybe talking with the Housing Committee, if you have some ideas, if you've got, I don't want to get in your way, and I think we can, I think coordinate that a little bit. There's a lot to digest there, maybe we can just figure out if there's a logical point for, to coordinate, and this gets into dates, but the housing workshop might be an opportunity to check off the box some of the things that you guys need to do as far as public input.
Great, yeah, I love that, we can harmonize everything.
But I don't want to set out on your side, so...
Yeah, harmonize.
Thank you.
Leon, you can pass the word, right?
Sure.
Any other business?
Yes.
A motion to adjourn?
I motion that we adjourn.
Second.
I love that, it's glorious.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you.